Good evening, and welcome to the October 25th meeting of the Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals. We'll begin this evening with our pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, do we have minutes for approval?
Not at this point.
Okay. Then we'll go to the first item on the board, which is the Hyde Park Quick Stop, 2203Z. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you, sir?
I'm well. Brandon with Mori Architects, here to represent Quick Stop. I assume we should see if there's any public here and open the public hearing. I know we can't take any action tonight, so...
Yes. We would like a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, welcome to the public hearing.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I should present anything, or if we should see if there's any of the public here.
We're familiar with what you're doing. I think we have a variance that was approved last year, and you're looking for an extension of that this year. There is a modest change in, I think, one part of it.
Yeah, it's actually being reduced. The impervious coverage is reduced a few percentage points.
Right. And could you talk to that first?
Yes. So, that is being changed because DOT, as we went through the planning process, DOT, we had two entrances into the site that were both two-way. DOT felt it was more reasonable to control traffic with two singular, one-in, one-out ways, so that reduced the amount of pavement that was on the site, just that change alone. Otherwise, all the internal workings of the site have not changed.
Okay. And that reduces the impervious by, what, three or four percent?
I'll give you the exact number. It was 81, I believe, that was previously approved, if I can find that application.
It might have been. And it went down to 79.5?
Seventy-nine, yeah. I want to say it's two and a half, but let's say two, plus or minus.
Okay. Okay. Now, in terms of timing, this has been for a year now. We anticipate any other delays as we move with the renewal, obviously?
I do not anticipate further delays. So, the delays were strictly just corresponding with DEC through the planning process. We've actually, we got conditional approval for Planning Board. One of the conditions was, we have wetlands, DEC permits that were required, and several easements, actually, with the neighboring property, and an easement for the town to maintain some of our stormwater control measures. Those items took a little bit of time to get done. We actually applied for some extensions for the Planning Board as well, and even through that process, the DEC changed our plan. So, we're back in front of them as well now for another reapproval. So, that, those have been the only holdups, it's just coordination. The owner is eager to get going.
Okay. Is there, are there questions?
Speaking of getting going, what's, if everything is approved?
It's gonna be, at this point, it's gonna have to be sometime in the spring.
Okay.
It sounds like, you know, if we can't take action tonight, I can't get Planning Board this, you know, coming month, so it's, you know, that's pushing us out, and we're into winter at that point anyway, so...
Now, we do have one issue that's come up, not relative to you, but a referral, I think because you are next to a state highway?
Yes.
We need to refer to the county, the Dutchess County Planning Board?
Department.
You want to?
Yes.
I'm aware.
General, we just called out 2:30. Because this is essentially a new grant of the variances, because they had lapsed, we're gonna have to make that referral. Hopefully, they get back to us before 30 days, but that is, they're time to review, so...
We've gotten their comment letter from the Planning Board side as well, so I don't remember if they had comments for our initial variance application, but I guess we'll see.
We'll find out.
So, you'll need to, we'll refer to them, and you'll need to contact them or be in touch with them?
Normally, what happens is you guys will receive their comment letter, and then if they do have comments, which again, I don't remember if they had them previously, we'll respond in kind to your offices, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. Otherwise, I think we have all the information. And so, at this point, we would continue the public hearing till the next month, which would be November?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
So, that's prior to the 30th?
It's prior to, I was just talking to Kathleen, yeah.
So, there should be a motion to make the referral?
I make a motion, we refer this to the Dutchess County Planning?
Yes.
Planning what? Board?
Department.
Department. Okay. All right, is there?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, I think, I think, otherwise, we have every, all the information, we understand the project, we're excited about it, and hopefully, we can wrap it up before Thanksgiving.
I hope so. I hope so.
Good. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Next on the agenda is Woods, 2312Z, 8 Albertson Street, Hyde Park. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
I'm Gary Beck from Z3 Consultants. I'm here on behalf of the owners. Shaun Wood, actually Shaun is right here with me. If you have any questions, he can, there's a seat here, Shaun, if you want to, just in case.
Before we go further, let me, let's open the public hearing, just for fun.
All right.
Entertained motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Well, thank you.
Tell us about your project.
Are you familiar with 8 Albertson at all? It's a single-family dwelling.
Pretty hard to find.
Been vacant for many, many years, dilapidated for many, many years. And Shaun and his brother are in the middle of repairing this and restoring it. And the front porch came up. It's a little close to the lot line. We had to take it down because it was unsafe, and so, we're here asking for relief of, I think, 11 and a half feet. We want to put it back where it was, which was three and a half feet off the property line.
Okay. So, that's the question. As you rebuild it, is there gonna be any variance from where it was before?
No.
Okay.
No.
So, you're replacing it, basically, and because you took it down, we need a variance now because of new regulations for the variance?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Questions?
What side of the house is it on? Front?
It's on the front.
Is there anything special that we should know about this project?
The only thing special about it, it's gonna be rehabbed after 30 something years.
Okay.
I have a photo, if you want to see what the porch looked like before. I don't have enough for everybody, but I'm sure you're all familiar with it.
Anybody want to see it?
We can pass it around and give back to you.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I will say that this application should also be referred to Dutchess County Planning.
Okay.
It is within 500 feet of the state highway.
What's the building on the left, closer to Route 9?
Closer to Route 9 was a studio.
Is that part of the property, though?
That's part of the property, yes.
This is the studio here.
Okay.
That's what I was looking at. I thought that was what we were having.
Oh, okay.
The porch?
See all the windows in the front there?
Yeah. That's the porch.
Correct.
Okay. All right. I think you are within 500 feet of 9?
That's correct.
So, I think we're gonna have the same issue. We will need to, we'll need to continue the public hearing. I don't think we have questions about your project, as much as you will need to refer this to the, we'll need to refer this to the Dutchess County Planning Department.
Want to ask for public comments?
Yeah. So, we'll be, we'll make a motion. Let me, before we do that, is there anybody from the public who has any comments on this? Yes, ma'am?
I live at 7 Harvey, and I've been there 30 years.
Excuse me, ma'am, sorry. Could you just please come up and take one of the microphones? There should be one that's loose on the desk, yeah.
There you go.
I live at 7 Harvey, which is directly behind, so I just, I received the letter that this would come, this project would come within 3.5 feet of my property line, so I'm just wondering if it's being built in the front, what is coming within 3 and 1/2 feet of my property line, since I'm behind there?
So, is your, I guess, is there?
Do you have a plot plan?
Are you inquiring as if there's a change toward your property?
Yes.
Which is behind this?
Correct.
So, I, I just want to understand that... There might be some confusion. So, it is a side yard setback that they are seeking a variance for. If you're to the rear of the property, you likely got it because you're within, in a certain distance of what's up that property.
Everyone within 150 feet gets that letter.
And this is Harvey?
That's Harvey's. Harvey's back here. This is you?
Seven. Yeah, I can't read that from here.
We're building it here.
Oh.
Not in the back.
So, I wonder why I have...
So, 3 and 1/2 feet.
Because of your property lines are adjoining.
I see. All right. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Otherwise, you're all right with it?
I can't read, it's too small, but that's you behind there.
Okay. Good. Thank you for coming. Okay. Are there any other comments from the public? Okay. There being none, then we will entertain a motion to refer this to the Dutchess County Planning Department.
I refer this to the Dutchess County Planning Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, I think we understand the project. I don't think we have any further questions. It's a matter of getting the Dutchess County Planning Department to do whatever they're going to do, and hopefully, we can come back. You can, we're continuing this public meeting.
To November 16th.
November 16th.
Is the motion?
Motion to that effect.
Motion to continue to November 16th?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, we will see you November 16th. Hopefully, the Dutchess County Planning Department has got everything set. I think we have all the information we need.
Okay.
And we don't want to keep you from your project anymore than we can, than we have to.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Good night.
That's Woods. Okay. What's the, next is Woods?
No, Hagan.
Yes.
Hmm? Hagan. Okay. The next item is Hagan Kane, 2313. Oh, and this is the youngest applicant we've had?
Yes. I have my sister.
Welcome here.
How you doing, guys?
We're good. I would have a motion to open public hearing.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Welcome. Tell us about your project.
How you doing? So, this is my wife and my daughter, Letty. So, we have three kids, and...
You want to pull, pull the microphone there?
Yeah, I thought, yeah, sorry. So, my wife has a small daycare that she runs out of the basement, just, and I have a small business, so we're just looking for like a little office, just to help more, get our stuff away from the kids' stuff, 'cause you know how that goes.
I don't understand that at all.
It doesn't get any smaller, their stuff.
I use the kitchen table.
It does not, yeah. So, absolutely. But as for like siding, everything was pretty much, it's going off the back of the house. Everything's gonna remain pretty much the same, and yeah, that'll be pretty much it.
You want to, you've got drawings there, you want to?
Yeah, sure.
Any comments to them?
So, my brother-in-law...
Oh, we're in trouble.
I'm the contractor, and so, yeah, they're just, they're just gonna stay with the, the setback is for the side yard, which is the same as the front yard, I guess, in the, with that area. So, they're just gonna kind of keep in line with the existing home. It's 12 by 20 overall, and so, that, they're requesting for a 32-feet setback on that side there, instead of the 50.
So, as we're actually building off the house, we're moving farther away from the road, the setback's getting farther. So, it's just the way the house is angled and the road, so as we come back, the diagonal, so the, by the time we're done, I think it was 40, 48 feet by the time.
So, that's the house where you guys are?
Yes.
There's the road going to Pine Brook here?
Yes.
You're building behind?
Yes, off the back, yes, sir.
Okay. And it doesn't run into an apartment, or stream?
Oh, no, it's all woods. There's nothing, literally, nobody can see back there, yeah.
The lot goes pretty far back.
I mean, during the springtime, when all the trees are bloomed, you can't, it's nothing there at all, so...
Okay. Question we have? Do we have any questions? Nope. It's Tuesday, sir.
I make a motion, we refer this to the, no?
No, we don't. We don't want to.
This is also a referral.
Yep.
Within 500 feet of Route 9?
9G.
I know. I heard you do the other ones, I was like, uh, somewhere will happen here, so I...
I bet you need to open it up for public comment.
I guess that's most of the town.
Yeah, yeah.
Or elusive.
I think we understand the project, it's clear, in terms of what you want to do and the variance you're requesting. Do we have any comments from the public? Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
That was, that was in favor, I think.
Yeah.
Where's your septic? Front?
I'm sorry?
Septic's in front?
Uh, yes, the septic is actually off to the side, not where we're moving.
Okay. So, again, we will need to, unfortunately, I think we've got all the information, I think good news is, we've got all the information, we understand your project, and I think, you know, will be well-received in November, November 16th.
Okay. I know, she said it wasn't a 30-day gap or something, so...
So, if we hear back from County Planning prior to then, then the board can take action. If not, we're gonna have to wait the full 30 days.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, we have a resolution prepared, so we could take action.
I appreciate that.
Okay. So, I need a motion to refer...
Make a motion to refer this project to the County Planning Department.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I now need a motion to continue the public hearing to November 16th?
Motion to continue.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, I think we're, again, we're excited about your project, and I know she is.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And we'll see you November 16th, if not before.
Awesome. Do you guys have a meeting in December, if God forbid?
We do have, yeah, we do have a meeting in December. What's, the December meeting is when?
It's the third Wednesday. I would have to go look up the date.
Well, yeah, let's hope we don't have to worry about it, but I was just curious. So, we didn't have to carry it in as far as you.
And again, it'll be the third Wednesday instead of the fourth Thursday.
Awesome. Perfect. Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, guys.
Appreciate it. The next item is the enclave at Hyde Park, 1703Z. The return of the enclave.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Amy Patain. I'm with the LRC Group, representing 54 Hyde LLC. Here today for the request for extension on the density variance, which was originally approved 3/22/17. This will be our sixth request. So, progress update is since the last extension, which was granted in April of '22. The water and sewer buildings are now complete, so we are in process with the Department of Health sign-off, and as you know, that was the only thing holding us up. So, the applicant is eager to get started, hopefully by the end of the year with foundations.
Do you have, is Department of Health, have you cleared that?
We haven't cleared it yet. We're in process to get their sign-off, so we're waiting on that.
Okay.
And remind me, were you gonna put a hydrant out to the road, or make some access for...
That I would have to double-check. Hydrant out to the road.
Good question.
Because I thought we had Molly's...
As I recall, there was one out there.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make sure I check.
Okay. So, there's no change in the project as it has been submitted previously?
No change.
Okay.
Now, the variances for this application have lapsed. They've applied for the extension beyond...
Oh, wait. They've, it lapsed? It was approved last year in April, and it was a one-year extension? So, it's, okay, so, yeah, it's lapsed? Okay.
Right. It lapsed in April, yeah.
Okay.
So, so the board will need to hold a new public hearing, essentially treating this as granting the same variances if it chooses to.
Okay. All right. So, we will, I need a motion then to set a public hearing. We can start that today. Can we start it today? No. We need to start it for next, no.
You can set the public hearing for next month if you would like.
For November?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. So, we need a motion to start the public hearing for this project in November.
Motion to set a public hearing on November 16th.
Okay.
Okay. Just, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, the public hearing will be, the new public hearing for this will be set in, we'll have that in November 16th?
Okay. Great.
And hopefully, we can get your project rolling.
We hope so.
Yeah, yeah.
Been a while, yeah?
I think we've been on since 2004.
Wow.
So, yeah, eager to get started.
It's time.
It's time.
It's time has come. Good. All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Across the street, they have a lot of water problems.
Really?
Wells that don't, are nonproductive, so the, some of the discussion was that they would help with that in some fashion, and I don't remember exactly what it was.
All right. We'll find out.
Okay.
Good question. I have your question.
Next is Duncan, 2314.
Hello again.
Where's your question?
Brandon with Mori Architects, here representing Dunkin' Donuts, Colonial Plaza. I have a little presentation, just to kind of show you what we're gonna do. Kathleen, was it loaded onto the laptop? Did I just use this?
I think we...
You could use your thumb drive.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
I assume we're all pretty familiar with the site. It's pretty much right at the gateway to Hyde Park. It's located on the west side of Route 9. It is a shop, it's a Dunkin' Donuts franchise with some shopping plaza behind it. What we're proposing to do, Dunkin' Donuts has recently reconfigured its identity. It's no longer Dunkin' Donuts, they're now Dunkin'. They've dropped the donuts, and they've dropped the...
They dropped the donuts?
They've, they still have them. But, but that's not their brand identity, so they're going through a rebranding. So, our franchisee is required to update their signage. Actually, you'll, you'll see a lot of changes. The entire interior's gonna change as well as part of this. There's three sign locations currently on the site. There's two monument signs. You'll see one there located in the northeast corner, that's sort of that orange, pink location there.
Yeah. Where's the other one?
The second one is here in the back, that goes to the grocery plaza.
Okay.
And then, the last sign location is the wall sign, which I'm sure you've all seen, that is currently on the building.
Okay.
Oh, that's too big. So, here's a comparison of the signages, okay? So, but previously, what we did is we went to the Planning Board, they're allowed to give us some discretionary approvals based on our distance from the roadway. We did achieve all of those discretionary approvals. So, what is now existing on the building, if you look at the top, is the coffee cup icon, Dunkin' in orange, and then donuts in the bright pink. Those are 11-inch letter sizes, but the logo itself, which we originally got a variance from this board 10 years ago when we did the building, has a 31 by 23 logo cup on it. We got variances for that because you're only permitted to have a 10 by 10 icon on the building. That sign area is 17.4 square feet. Now, with our discretionary approvals, we're allowed up to 14 inches based on our distance from the roadway. That's the second image that you see there. So, that's a 14-inch-high letter on the sign. Now, there's no logo anymore, so there's no logo size, and the sign area, if we go with only the 14 inches, is reduced to 7.3 square feet. That's over...
From the first one.
From the, from what we have today, what's legally existing today. So, we lose over half of our signage area, and we're permitted 70 square feet of signage area on that building, based on the frontage we have on the road. We're only using 7.3 square feet of that, less, a little over 10% if we were to use 14-inch letters. And it's our opinion that this almost looks like a mistake, it's too small. I mean, you look at that, it's basically the same size as Dunkin' is existing on the building without the donuts and the icon missing. What we're proposing is an 18-inch sign, so this is a little more in keeping with the current size of the sign on the site.[1476.83] current size of the sign on the site. That letter size is 18 inches, which is more than what we're permitted to do, and that's why we're here for the variance. Again, there is no logo, the sign area is still reduced, it's 12.11 square feet, which is still 30% smaller than what we have on-site today. And still only 18% of what would be permitted if we had a longer name. If my name was Dunkin', 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 I could still fit it on there, y- you know? So, again, it's, it's also to be proportional. Um, you know, it's, it, if you look, it lines up with the window mullions, the, the splits in the, in, in the window, similar to the sign that we have above. The middle sign, which is once again what we're permitted currently, is just, it's, it's difficult to see.
Can you show the, yeah, okay.
Yep, we're, we're gonna get to the monument here next. If I can exit the full screen. Moving to the monument. Again, top is what we have existing, I'm not gonna go through it the same way, but you get the drift. Uh, we, we have removed the logos, we have completely reduced the profile of the sign to just the word Dunkin'. So again, the 11 inches that's permitted on our sign face, which is a 40-square-foot sign face, we're actually, would only be using 10 square feet of that sign face. And it, again, looks almost like a mistake, it's too small inside the sign face. Now, I'm gonna be fair, I, I recently got the letter from Chairman Dupree and how the planning board does feel about the signs. I was not, I did not share this comparison with them, so they weren't privy to what I feel like they actually approved, and its scale relative to the building and to the monument sign itself. But looking at what we proposed here for this monument sign, I do tend to feel it overwhelms the 40-square-foot size. So that 14-inch letter size I do think is a little big here. I don't think the 11 is sufficient, again, it looks teeny inside the sign face that's permitted. What I would tend to propose, and I actually, right before the meeting, after I got Chairman's message regarding his feelings on the sign, I'm just gonna pass these out. Again, I apologize, I wasn't able to add it to the original presentation, but these are 14-inch letters. I know it's not a big difference, but I think it's, the, the ratio actually fills the sign face better and results in a lesser request for variance.
This is what you're proposing?
I would now propose the 14 inches opposed to the 15. I would ask for a variance of 11 to 14 for the monument signs, and still ask for an 11 to 18 for the building. Just to finalize this, just to, you know, so everybody can see, that is the exterior of the building, and again, I want you to picture what essentially we would be legally allowed to do today is just remove donuts and the coffee cup. And at that point, you can see how minimal i- it is, it just, it would be out of scale. And, and they may be existing previously, or there may be other reasons, but there's several other signs that have very little lettering to them, and in order, and very similar distances from Route 9 that are immediately south to us, that have much larger letters than the 14 inches that were permitted, and they're literally next door. Now, they may be pre-existing or whatever, but the fact is, there is precedent that this exists in the town. The other thing I just kinda wanna point out a little bit, you know, in the Chairman's letter, he kinda, to respectfully disagree, there's a lot of, the site is successful, and it's commercially successful, and therefore it doesn't need the signage requirements. I tend to disagree because it's, it's successful because it has tourists around them, it has college kids who aren't familiar with the site, it has, you know, a lot of people who aren't necessarily local to the area. And this building, because it's designed in the town's aesthetic, which I think it's very successful at, doesn't look like a Dunkin' Donuts. It has, like a, like a Dunkin' Donuts is like a McDonald's. You just see the building, you know what it is, you don't need to read the signs, you don't need to see that. This building does not have that advantage. So it's important that it has a sign face that's at least equal to what it has today. So that's why we're requesting the variances. Further, you don't really read the Dunkin' Donuts when you drive by that sign, you just see orange letters on top of pink letters, and you know it's a Dunkin' Donuts, you see a coffee cup, you know it's Dunkin' Donuts. The font size wasn't important back then, that's all been eliminated, it's only the font size. This is now the key component to say this is a Dunkin' Donuts. It's no different than the McDonald's you have down the street that has a much larger-than-10-inch-
Is this a marketing mistake?
I, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not Dunkin' corporate. I do think-
I, I travel a lot, and I look for the-
The, the coffee cup.
In the orange.
Or DD.
Yeah.
Right? Well, those, they're, they're moving away from those things. So this is gonna be the new thing that you have to look for, especially because our site doesn't look like a typical Dunkin' Donuts.
Can you address the, um, the sign in back? Because that to me is, from what all of you have been saying in terms of people driving by, that's a different sign, that's a different-
That sign-
-crowd. Can you leave that this way it is?
Well, that sign, so it has to be changed. Now, that sign, um, I don't have my package in front of me, but I'm just gonna go up to the screen. That sign is built exactly the same as this sign is, except it has none of the pallets or the other tenants. So it's literally from this column, this way, is deleted. So what you would be seeing is this, this, and this. So I would still have the same request that we take these 11-inch letters and we change them to the new 14-inch that's in front of you, and again-
And what size is that right up there?
This up here now?
At the bottom?
The bottom, that's 15. And I, I do agree, after reading the Chairman's letter, it does oversize the sign face. What you have in front of you is more reasonable.
I, I have a question. When, on the front, when it, it just has Dunkin'?
Yes.
If you were to add, uh, words to that, you would be able to? That's what you said, you have, you have the ability to do that?
We have the ability to go up to 70 square feet of sign area, within zoning, with no variance. I could add several letters to that. I, I can't, because Dunkin' corporate, this is their image, but yes, we could theoretically, what you see in the middle one there, I could write an entire sentence across the gable face of that thing.
You could put "at Hyde Park."
I, you know, they may be interested in things like that, I doubt the town really would like that, or the board probably, planning board would probably get mad at me, but yes, you could. Essentially, i- it kinda feels like we're, we're losing a lot of signage just because we went away from iconic, you know, icons, and have just changed to font. And just to get back to my other point, it's very similar to just north of there, the McDonald's, or just south of here, where they kind of, the building fits the town, but I think the board, and I would imagine it came in front of you, the big M, had to have gotten some variance, and I think there's just some precedent for allowing that when it becomes the feature that tells you it's this franchise.
Okay. Questions from the board? Any? Counsel?
Yes, again, yes, with the other applications, this needs to be referred to county planning.
We need to set a public, we need to set a public hearing as well.
Yeah.
So we need two things, you're gonna need to go to the Duchess County Planning Department, and we will, can we refer that before we open the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion to, I would move that we refer this to the Duchess County Planning Department?
No, she'll move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we refer that. Second, I would move that we set the public hearing for this for November 16th, um, to, go further on that. Hopefully by that time you'll have heard from the Duchess County Planning Department.
That'd be great.
I'm sorry?
We will have heard, we will send it, and they will respond to us.
Yep.
Okay, 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 I beg your pardon.
We need a motion.
Okay.
We need a motion to set the public hearing.
Anything else?
All right.
Okay.
Motion.
We got a motion for a public hearing?
Yeah.
Oh, we do, okay. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Before I leave, I could, just, in general feeling from the board, obviously, I know you can't take any action, but are we okay with these? Is there other things the board would like to see? What are your feelings?
I think the, I think the, we understand what you're trying to do, and I think that's very clear. I think, public, we wanna hear from the public, to see if there's anything there.
So, we, we're accepting, the middle one is not accepted?
The middle one, I wouldn't need to be here, right.
And that is, how many?
Uh, currently on the building, it is-
How many inches?
14 inches.
14 inches?
The, the propos, the permitted is 14 inches right now, yes.
Well, wait a minute.
Well, it's different.
Different size.
From the building and the monument.
Right.
But we're going from 11 to 18 on the building?
No.
14?
The current is 11, yes, but we are permitted 14 based on the planning board's approval to 18.
Okay.
Both monument signs will be going from 11 to what we asked for, 15, but we're gonna change that to 14 now. So it'll be 11 to 14, 14 to 18 on building.
Okay, okay, I got it, I think. Okay, good.
They're all the same?
No, they're not all the same.
So 14 is on the monuments, is what you, you want?
I would like 14, yes.
11 to 14.
Allowed is 11.
11.
On the building?
14 is allowed, but they're at 11 and they're gonna go for 11 to 18.
You know, I'll leave it here for you guys.
The building is, you, you're allowed?
14.
14.
The building, I'm allowed 14.
I'm gonna go to 18, yep.
In the package, there should be this table and a letter that I wrote to you guys that really kinda clarifies everything very quickly. I just marked that the one change will be changing that-
Good, okay, we'll, we'll get this on every month, okay, good.
And I'll revise that and get it resubmitted before the next meeting.
Alright, I know what you're doing, I know, yeah. Let me get some pencil. Okay, alright, any other question? I think, I think we're good.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We will see you in November, November 16th.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Take care.
Okay, and our final.
Our group. Our entourage.
Oh my gosh.
I, I did ask if we could use the baby, but they said-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Gentlemen, uh, if you could introduce yourselves and-
Sure, let me, I'll, I'll take the lead, my name's Michael Zarin, I'm from, law firm Zarin Steimitz. I believe the last time I was before you was with the Saki Bowie, Sai Shu.
Ah, Saki, ah.
Did they have an opening date?
They're, they had a soft opening ceremony in any day now.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, they, um, and I hope, I hope you feel that came out.
Yeah.
Came out, good.
Good job.
Good, good, glad to hear that. Um, well, I think we have another project that we're here for tonight that I think you'll also be impressed with. I think it's gonna become, and I, the state has also indicated, governor's office has made this a special project that, uh, will be a really exciting brand destination, sustainable, environmentally sustainable resort, um, on the balance or portion of the CIA property north of the Marichikil. They tried once to accomplish this in 2011, some of you may recall, uh, that project was approved and never, never built.
This is the north, the north end of the CIA property?
Correct, correct, from the Marichikil, we'll, we'll show you. We, so, so I wanna introduce you who I'm with tonight. To my left is Lou Dorso. Lou, um, is the project manager, head of construction for NRI, um, and came just for this meeting, uh, from the, lives in the North Woods of, of Minnesota.
Oh.
Uh, walked here.
You're up near Grand Marie. Are you up near Grand Marie?
Uh, I'm actually, would be west of that, about 150 miles.
Okay, alright, okay.
Middle of-
Lake of the Woods. My grandfather was up there a lot, yeah.
Okay, and to his left is Michael Gotti. Michael is from Gensler Architects, a pretty well-respected law firm, I think, uh, for law firm architectural. I think you'll, you'll see the product of his work and be impressed.
And the character to your right?
Do you know Chris Lepine?
No.
Oh, from La Bella, the Chris Lepine, from La Bella, formerly Chason?
I haven't been before this EBI hearing.
Oh, you are very lucky tonight, you're lucky I have the microphone, for the time being.
Do you have, do you have somebody behind you?
And behind me is Michael Barco from the, um, NPFP, he's the landscape architect.
Okay.
So, we're here tonight, um, for discreet variance approval for the, as you saw in our cover letter, for the sales trailer. However, we wanted to obviously take the opportunity to introduce you to the project, see the whole project, and I'll, I'll review also, there are several other variances, we will be coming to you with, uh, those, when we get close to the SECRE, with SECRE closing with the planning board, and we're, we're really in the weeds with them now. Uh, they have seen the application for the, at their last meeting, for the trailer. I think the reaction, I think, being fair, when I said, they were, they were good with the concept and the location, they wanted to see the route that people would take to look at the property, and we'll explain that, but, um, we'll be, uh, we'll be going back to them on the 15th, and hopefully back to you on 16th if we can, for a public hearing and, and move from there. So, with that said, let me turn it over to Michael. We have about a 15-minute, 20-minute presentation that we've done to the planning board and to other boards, um, that I think captures the, the essence of the project, so Michael, please.
Can you guys see that okay? Should I turn that a little bit?
Sure.
That's good, okay, you got it from there, alright, now I appreciate the opportunity to, to present this, it's an amazing project that we're, uh, we've been working on for a very, very long time. Some of you may remember 10 years ago, there was a hotel, uh, proposed for this site, kind of a classic hotel, very, very large building, in the, in the, uh, design ethos of, of the Culinary Institute. This is very different than that. We actually started looking at, at, at a, a project like that, but this has changed quite a bit. And what we, what we see here is, we say, here on the marketing side, uh, we see a new place, something different, something unexpected. You know, the partnership with the Culinary Institute is an important part of this. Um, they are part, part of the, the project, they own the land, um, we are gonna be working with them to create, uh, some incredible amenities. Uh, part of this is gonna be the opportunity to, um, to be, to, to take lessons, cooking lessons, and, and, and learn all about that as, as you celebrate the local, uh, elements of this site. One thing we discovered as we walked around the site is how incredibly beautiful this site is, as is. We wanna do as little as possible to affect this, this site in general. Um, so our, our, the architecture we've, we've created through here, which you'll see in some of the, uh, some of the sketches, is really, feel like we came out here, we found some foundation walls, we found some things, and we've built upon them. Uh, we're doing everything we can to minimize the, the disturbance of the existing, uh, topography and the existing, uh, just, existing natural elements. Um, if you're familiar with, uh, I'm sure you are, the, the CIA campus is here, our site is just north of that, uh, in, in these areas designated as number one. Moving forward, I'll jump right into the, the master plan. Um, you know, one of the things that's, that's important here is to kinda show that it really is about, about inserting these buildings into the natural topography. You know, we are gonna be, we are gonna be planting back in between the buildings, but the idea here is that we are, we are maintaining, uh, pretty much the entire, uh, the entire site as it relates to the, the natural elements. Everything we've done, the placement of these buildings, we've walked out there countless times, I'm not sure how many now, many, many times. Um, we have an incredible app now that we're allowed, we can walk around this site and we can find exactly where we're standing on the site, and it, as it relates to where, where our buildings have been, been placed. So, we've made a lot of tweaks along the way, and the planning board knows that, and we've apologized profusely, but we are at a point where we feel very, very comfortable with the layout of this, of this site. And I'll get into some of the individual products as I show you some of the renderings here, but I'm gonna jump forward to the next one, and I think, Michael, you're gonna take the lead, uh, here to talk a little bit about some of the areas.
I'll, I'll do this quickly.
Microphone, please.
This was in the spirit of, you know, we want you to see all the requested variances, um, even though we're only today seeking the trailer, temporary trailer, uh, construction trailer. But most of the variances here that we're gonna be seeking are drainage and grading variances, temporary, they'll be restored back to the natural. There'll be one here, let me put on my glasses, I'm sorry, I can't juggle. 10 years ago I used to be able to juggle, now I can't juggle. You've got, you've got approximately the Marichikil variance in here within the stream corridor, again, temporary grading, about 18,000 square feet, just because there's a pedestrian, an existing pedestrian bridge here, and we're gonna continue to use that as a pedestrian bridge, we're not expanding it, but we do have to do some work on it and so forth, so there'll be, and then there'll be a little bit of drainage, I mean, a little bit of grading and so forth, because of the road. So that's, that's one, but-
And is that a permanent one?
No, the, that'll be temp, that'll be a temporary just drainage grading. Permanent in the sense that, that's an existing, existing bridge that will continue, will exist, and the road will be obviously permanent.
So are you winding the road or just redoing it, or?
No, no, that, that will be a new road.
New road, okay.
There's another, again, it's within the, it's within the stream corridor, but it'll be restored, and look, you have, and Michael didn't mention, I just wanna be specific, when Michael says we're preserving the rest of the site, we're preserving the rest of the site, this is the conservation easement, the Winnekee? You have the Sina Hudson Conservation Easement? You've got the stream corridor, as you know, 100 feet on both sides, not touched, not touched in any permanent way. You've got wetland non-disturbance areas, you have some pre-contact non-disturbance areas, so, it's, and then you have the 150 buffer non-disturbance along Route 9. Almost all of them, we're not touching whatsoever. So, this whole green area in here, that's going to be preserved in perpetuity. We've also, where you have the villas, just so you know, all the villas, these leasehold villas, all this green within them, there'll be restrictive covenants that we are entering into with all of them, that they can put no outside fencing, no patio furniture, no disturbance to the exteriors. There'll be a patio, and there'll be the, the villa, you'll see the villas, and you'll understand, that whole natural environment is what they're gonna want, and we're gonna preserve that. So all the dark green you see, and the habitat connection, and here's your, here's your other stream, and that protection on both sides, 100 feet, all that connectivity is going to be maintained on the site.
Michael, the, the road in the, in the lower right-hand corner, that road, is that at the, the bottom of the hill, basically?
Yes, that's where it starts leveling out, where you don't have that berm, and you're gonna see in the presentation, we have some visuals, what you'll see from Route 9, what you'll see from the river. So, we're pretty deep into it with planning board.
Yeah.
On, on SECRE and the coordinated review and presenting, so you're gonna be seeing almost what they're seeing now in real time. This has been updated as of last week when we showed it.
Not here.
The other variance that we'll be seeking, another grading, about 14,000, this is an emergency access and existing now, that we have to just do some grading work and upgrade somewhat. It's not gonna be the main entrance, what you just pointed to Chairman, is gonna be the new main entrance. We've worked it out with DOT, they're very happy with it. We went with the town to the DOT, we came to have a agreement on what that should all look like. Um, the other-
That, that, is, that other entrance you're talking about, is that temporary?
This is, will be permanent, it's an existing permanent, but it's emergency.
Emergency only.
It's only used as an emergency site.
And at the lower right-hand corner, that's at the top of Teller Hill?
That's St. Andrews.
That's St. Andrews.
That's St. Andrews.
What is?
Andrews here, and it'll just, it'll be continued.
Understood.
Alright, so the other variance, it will be a grading variance, uh, within the 100 years of property line. Uh, this is the 100-foot setback, everything will be outside of that 100-foot setback, except this grading for about 2,006, 33, that's a temporary, obviously. And then the only structure that we're seeking a quote-unquote variance for, and within the setback, is an extension of the pool area, and this is what's called the wellness area. So, the spa and the like, and all, and again, we'll come into you with more details on that and discuss and outline your five criteria and why we need that, but I just thought it's important, you wanna know about it.
Alright.
that. But I just thought it's important for you to know about. That's the only other, the only other one is a very minor piece in here, a couple of hundred feet, which, and this is a parking. Town wants us to create as, as many smaller parking areas as we can. This is a little bit, and this is within the hundred and fifty-foot setback.
So, that's a variance within the hundred and fifty-foot.
Right. And that's it. And that's the only one, that's the only one within the hundred and fifty-foot setback. We've stayed completely out of the hundred and fifty-foot setback along Route Nine. And you, you won't see that. That's where the berm is and, you know, everything, and heavily vegetated, as you can see. Otherwise, we're not touching. Everything else is outside. Very small little area. So, those, those are the variances. Again, we'll come back to you, not, probably not too long from now. We're, we're going, finishing the secret process, I think, getting closer. We'd like to get a little bit closer. We have one more meeting with the, I think, with the planning board that could affect maybe a little bit of grading tweaking that we're doing, final tweaking. So, you know, this could change by twenty feet, a hundred feet. This could change by ten feet. So, we didn't want to come to you until we knew what we're giving you as final, you know, final variance. Okay? And let me, let Michael go in. You'll see a lot more of the rest of the site.
Any public area where people can go and look at the river or anything like that?
The, the whole trail system.
Yeah, I was...
All of this, excuse me.
I will, yeah, I was, that's, that's next, next on my list.
All of this, the trails that we, we walked with the Winneke last week, and we're going to work with that to make us a whole trail system. It's up here, here, connected to the FDR, all public. CIA is going to designate an area that you can walk through CIA for the first time, the town had asked for. So, connecting now the FDR through here, through...
So, is there going to be some parking in that area?
No.
For the trails? In other words, if somebody wanted to use the trail, head of that trail and go south or go north?
Actually, the, the, the request was that we connect the trails that exist on the CIA campus and exist on the FDR. So, it was really about us connecting the two of those. So, most people will, will start from the, from either the CIA campus or from the north and come south. If you are staying at the resort, you'll have a parking space there, and you'll be using the same trail system. So, it was really about connecting the two trail, two trail systems that exist, FDR and one, one at the CIA.
And it's temporary, like a resort. It's not a purchase and live?
It's a resort.
This is a, this is a resort. The, we've worked this out with the town. The, the model that you're seeing now for these sort of integrated, natural, natural sort of, of these lower-scale buildings, so the villas will be, and this is all being ground leased from the CIA, so it makes it a little more complicated in how we're structuring it. But the villas, people can buy the villa, those villas on the east side, on the east part. However, they're transient lodging. They, they must make them available for rental sixty-five percent of the year.
Oh.
And that's, you looked over, yes, we've, we've talked to that once or twice.
As, as part of the resort.
And worked that out. It's, it's transient housing under the building code, and they're going to be sprinkled as, you know, as sort of resort. But, and they will have, they will have membership in the resort as mandatory. They're part of the resort. It, it, it's more like a, I don't know if you've ever been down to some of the, the southern resorts where, you know, there are houses, you'll rent a house, but you have, you'll have access to all the facilities, and all the, all the infrastructure will be maintained by the resort. All the exteriors of those houses will be maintained by the resort. All the landscaping will be maintained by the resort, all the enforcement. So, it's, it's a integrated resort. You'll just, and when you see these structures, I think, you'll, I think you'll think they're pretty cool, but I'll let Judge.
And is that a part that's to the west, is that something different, or is that...
That will, those will be more traditional rental, you know?
I'll go through, I can go through all of them. It's kind of, it's in, it's in the presentation. No, that's okay. We're excited, too. I want to show you. So, I'll try and get forward. Okay, so, this next, this is an important drawing for us because it, it kind of shows the scale of this as it relates to the existing canopy of, of trees that are there. None of our buildings is, is over thirty feet on the entire site. The canopy of trees ranges from fifty to a hundred feet. So, it is really basically buried below, you know, the natural line. As you look from the FDR, this section here, the FDR, you'll be looking up at the, at the health and wellness building in this corner of the, of the site, and you really won't see much of anything from the FDR. It's, it'll be pretty much out of sight because you're kind of looking up, up there. As it relates to Route Nine, you'll see in some of the renderings we show, really, you can't, you won't be able to see this from, from outside. So, to work our way around the site, on that, that western part of the site that you were just asking about, Richard, our main buildings are, are here. There's, here on the right-hand side is going to be a restaurant and a lounge, kind of a greeting, greeting space and retail. And on the, on the opposite side of that is going to be our event space for about two hundred and fifty people, and then a great lawn in the back. You can start to see the architecture I was alluding to before. The idea is that, that we, we've created this heritage, it's an element that's going to be consistent as you work your way around, and you see that in the renderings. And then some simple shapes, some Hudson Valley-inspired shapes for the buildings throughout with, with some basic materials, some metal, some wood, and glass. So, a consistency here that we're, we're trying to maintain if we work through. But the other idea is to create different products for people when they come to this resort. One day, I might want to rent one of the rooms in the, in the block of rooms. There's a standard section, and I'll show you that. And, and another time, I might want to rent an entire villa for my entire family. So, as you work your way around the site, and what you're seeing and what you're experiencing is going to be different each time you go, which is, which is a unique aspect of the, of the site and something we want to maintain. That's going the wrong way. Oh, it's just going back and forth. That doesn't, oh, going the wrong way. Hang on. Bear with me. I'm going backwards. Now, it's going forwards. Now, it's not going. Back to that. Come on. Oh, there we go. Okay. So, now, at the back of the two buildings, you see the views here with the red arrows on the left-hand side. Oh, sorry, guys, that's a little glitchy. I could do it from up here, I think. Yeah, boy, boy, that's really going. Sorry. The reveal is, is blown. You guys saw them all. That's all part of the presentation. It doesn't work. I'm not touching it.
We told you we keep it under fifteen minutes.
I know. I'm trying. I'm trying.
We do know how to run a resort.
Yes.
Round and round.
Yeah.
AI for the computer.
I'm going to go slow. All right, that's the section. You saw that? First rendering. Okay. The back of the buildings are the great lawn in the back, the, the lounge and the restaurant space. The back of this building is going to be designed to open up completely so you have an indoor-outdoor space for your large events. Work our way around. Come on, come on. There we go. Okay, this one, we, we're calling the distillery. We've actually changed that because it, it has a negative connotation. We're not distilling gin here. It is going to be a tasting area for wine tasting and, and also some, some classes. And it's the high point of the site. That's, that's here overlooking the Hudson River to the, to the south. But we strategically placed that there, and, and we're designing around this to take advantage of that natural topography. So, you'll see that in some other sketches as I move forward.
Is that the hilltop?
That's the hill.
B, F, and B?
Yeah, yeah. Starting to see some of the, some of the other products around here. These are the, these will be the pure rental villas. These are not part of the leasehold. And you can kind of see what, what I described before, kind of simple shapes on top of a heritage wall. The, the landscape in front, and if you have questions about that, we do have Michael here, if he had any specific questions about the landscaping, is really meant to, to infill what's there today, because what we found out there today is pretty spectacular. Working our way around, you'll see the other products on the site, once my computer decides to move forward. So, these are the block of typical rooms that I had alluded to before. This is going to be more of a standard hotel room building over here, and the back of those are all looking over the Maurici Kill, which is also quite beautiful. It kind of slopes down and then back up, and you can kind of see the architecture for these, a little bit different. Working our way around, these are, these are, we're calling these the cabins. Again, you can kind of see an effort made. What we discovered is there's a couple of areas around the site that have very, very steep topography. Here, we came up with a way where we can just touch the ground in a very, in a, in one specific area where you'll enter on the back, you know, on the backside of these. And as you move out, they'll be supported, and, and the, the ground below, we, we won't be touching. That's really the idea here, is to keep that, that natural, you know, that natural brush below. And these are going to be really spectacular rooms as they make, work your way down. Then it drops off again before you build these buildings. So, you're looking over the top of those buildings as you look out. We, we've placed a few more of those in the northwest corner of the site. Moving forward, this is the, the health and wellness area that Michael mentioned before in our pool, which is the, the one area, the one structural area that, that we're going to be encroaching that, that setback. But this building is really meant to be a spa and a relaxation area for, for, for all the, for all the customers. You can see the pool there. There's another view that my next slide shows of that area. Here, it'd be an infinity pool looking out over, beyond to the FDR, to the north. And we jump into some of the individual villas on the east side. Oh, actually, first, we'll, we'll visit these. These are called the Wellness, the Wellness Villas. They're stacked. They have an upper and a lower level, and they're, they're situated right near the wellness area. Again, a different product, a different area of the site. There's some really beautiful things happening back here. There's a stream back there. It makes an incredible, beautiful noise. So, we've, we've placed what we're calling the Wellness Villas over here. So, if you're renting, that's probably a good one to, to rent when you go out there. Moving forward, there's another, another rendering of that from the back. Again, the idea you can tell from these renderings is, is really about that we've placed these buildings right into the, right into the natural topography. As we're starting to see the front of the, of some of the standard villas, we have two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and four-bedroom offerings here. And you'll see a consistency in the architecture, but you'll see some nuances from, from one to the next. So, here is about horizontals. Again, you can kind of see this heritage wall and the stonework, and then everything else kind of built around it with some very simple shapes in glass and, and some metal. And I'll go forward. It was really meant to go through this much more quickly than this, but you'll see. I'll just, I'll just run through these because you get a good sense. And if you can kind of see here, these are the, these are the villas we were, we were rendering in these, in these drawings.
Those are the larger villas. You've talked a lot about the elevation and stuff.
Yeah.
What about for handicap people?
Okay, yeah. We're going to be meeting all the requirements that we would need to meet. There's, I think, out of, out of all of those products, we have, there's a percentage that you have to make handicap accessible. We're working closely with Chris Lepine and his team to make sure the roadways, if there is a walkway, that all those are handicap accessible. The main building has what they need per, per code for all that. But yeah, very, very aware of that and making sure we're, we're accommodating. This is, this is a, a drawing that Michael started to allude to. I'll start there. This, this entry, entry security station here when you, when you enter the site. We're going to be trying to find as many natural elements as we can to use in our architecture. But this will be the gateway, gatehouse, as you work your way in off of St. Andrews Road. Then you work your way south. We have an amenities building here for the residents, or I shouldn't say residents, the, the guests of the resort. And that'll, that'll have a fire pit, and it'll have another opportunity for classes and such. And then this is an interesting building to the, to the east of our event space. It's, we call it the greenhouse, but we're going to be doing hydroponic farming inside that space. So, the, it's, it's part of the, the experience. The chefs will be coming out there and picking the herbs and the, and such, and you'll be able to see that as part of the culinary experience. So, it's going to be kind of an iconic, an iconic part of, of the, of the experience. Moving forward, we're taking advantage of just about every sustainable opportunity that we have, rainwater harvesting, photovoltaics, vegetative roof, roofing, working very closely, again, with, with Chris Lepine and the Lobella team to do everything we can. We are going for lead silver as a minimum. That's been the request of the, of the ownership. If we can go higher, we will. Many, most of the things we do in, as, as a matter of course, with our firm at Gensler, is all about sustainability. So, lead silver is our, is our minimum goal here for the entire site. And there's a lot of ways that we can do that. Maybe some specific buildings won't, won't be meeting it, but as a, as a whole, as an assembly of buildings, this site is, is targeting lead silver. I'll let Chris Lepine talk a little bit about this. These are the stormwater practice initiatives we have throughout the site.
This is the captivating portion of the presentation you've been waiting for, as we talk about the stormwater practices up. Michael alluded to the cisterns that are being provided. The intent is to capture about fifteen thousand gallons of roof runoff and utilize that for irrigation purposes. There's also potentially looking at using it for also some wastewater facilities, like toilets as well within the facility. That'll also help us with our lead certification that's being sought after.
About electric production.
I'm sorry, can you...
Electrical production.
From the cisterns?
From the water. Grab the water, and you got lots of elevation.
We also have a lot of rock. But they go hand in hand. So, it's about ten thousand square feet of vegetative roofs that are proposed throughout the site.
I'm sorry, ten thousand feet of...
Vegetative roof. That are being proposed throughout the site.
That'll slow the runoff.
It certainly will. And we're also focused on a series of landscape depressions for managing the stormwater consisting of bioretention areas, rainwater planters. Rainwater planters adjacent to the buildings will have small rain gardens within some of the lots for the roof runoff as well. And we're going to focus on, obviously, a, a native species, but something more that's in line with what's existing out there. So, it's in sync with the existing landscape community there.
Is that high maintenance?
Um, you know, in the last, you know, fifteen years since the green infrastructure practices have been recommended, the real maintenance aspect of some of these is the pretreatment aspect.
Okay.
And that is where you have your sediments, your oils, and your greases. If you do a, and, and along with our, our stormwater pollution prevention planning plans, there's a maintenance schedule. They're required to adhere to a maintenance schedule. The town's required to check up on them every five years to confirm that they're adhering to their maintenance schedule.
Love to hire somebody. How many, how many of those cisterns do you have?
Well, we only have one. I mean, we're, we're looking at this. The cisterns are either going to be two seventy-five-hundred gallon ones or one fifteen-thousand gallon one that's placed. But, you know, just to go back, it, it's all about managing your pretreatment facilities, your sediment, your oils. And, and as long as you stay on top of that, your major practices, like your bioretention areas and your rain gardens, they're going to sustain themselves. And it's, as long as you get the, you also have to get the vegetation established as well.
Thank you.
Do you have your own sewer?
Yeah. So, the sewer for the project is going to be accommodated through a connection to the existing infrastructure on the Culinary Institute's property. They have a tenancy agreement with the city of Poughkeepsie and the town of Poughkeepsie. This project got an additional twenty thousand gallons, the CIA did for it, and we're tapping into an existing twenty thousand gallons the CIA has, so a total of forty thousand gallons to support the project.
Okay.
So, just to, the, the materials, basic materials that'll be throughout the entire site, we did look at the scenic Hudson requirements for this and, and exactly what they, what they're looking for. So, you can kind of see, it's, it's all natural materials. We're going to look for some local stone. We're going to be removing very little, but what we do remove, we're going to, we're going to be using. You can see some reclaimed wood siding, some other charred wood, some heavy timber. Again, we're, we're wrapping up the structural design for all of these and, and taking advantage of all that. So, you can kind of see, it was simple, not, not about lots of, lots of different materials. It's really meant to feel like it's all, it's all working together. These were two renderings they asked us to do. You can kind of see, this is from the Hudson River, and purposefully, we wanted to show what you would see from a distance because it's very difficult to see the buildings. And this is, this, these pictures were taken fully leaf, leaf off. So, if, if you can't see this, I can probably, no, if I do, that'll mess up. But you can kind of start to see the shapes of the building, you know, beyond. But keep in mind, we have a hundred and fifty-foot buffer in front from the Hudson River of trees that'll be not, not touched at all. So, for the most part, these will be pretty, pretty hidden buildings from the river. And from the, from Route Nine, there's one area. This is that, that emergency roadway that exists today. This is a photograph from, from Google Maps. And you'll see that our, our maintenance buildings, it's actually, when we walked out there, we, we discovered, we had originally had villas there. We discovered it's the noisiest, noisiest place on our site because of Route Nine. So, we took advantage of that, and we're placing our, our service buildings there, number one, to help with sound attenuation, but two, because it's a, it's a, it's, it's not a obtrusive building... to help with sound attenuation, but two, because it's not an obtrusive building, it's going to be very, very simple, it's going to be just the wood siding. And you can see, this is half, this is probably an April photograph or so, where half the leaves are on and off. In the summertime, it'll be completely, you won't be able to see anything in the summertime.
Still out of the 150-foot buffer.
Yeah, still beyond that. And I asked Michael to come, so I want him to come up and talk a little bit. I told him he might not, but if he comes all the way from New York City, I want him to at least say something.
Do you want to come up?
Sure.
These are the, I'll let you.
Yeah. We, as we talked about last week, we walked it with the Winnicke group, right? We looked at the local plant material that we have there, as far as hickories, oaks, sycamores, very large sycamores, that we're all looking to protect and highlight. We are kind of establishing some trail system in there so people can appreciate and look at the site. So, no, no. Same with the ground, so, as I'm sure you all are aware, deer are going to be a problem, right? So we have to work with plant material that we can, you know, get established there and hold ground, and the deer are not going to just slaughter. That's going to be my biggest challenge, I'll be honest with you. They don't like invasive plant material, in case you found that out, that's the only thing that does survive, but we can't plant that, right? Some typical details as well.
Can't plant it.
We got it.
She's watching.
There's one.
Oh, the board, right. So we have talked to the Winnicke group, as well as read through the easements, we're allowed to do raised walkways, and if it has no impact on that, so where the grading is too challenging to make it accessible, we'll look to do wood decks to make it accessible.
How far would you raise it?
Well, so it depends on the grade, right? So there may be points that the grade's really dropping off, and we don't want people to go into the impact of that area. So it may be five feet above grade, right? But we would want it to probably be about two feet as a minimum, just because we want things to grow and be able to travel under it. We don't want to block anything.
All right, and I think that's about it. I think what we show here, Michael, I don't know, this is the trailer.
Okay. So, and Chris, I'm interested in the programs you have. Is there some way we can get information on that?
Sure.
Okay.
In terms of the plan set, kind of that gives you an overview?
How you're handling the water, how you're handling all of that.
Sure, we can do that. We can give you a copy of our plans, the locations of all the practices. And an overview, just the narrative of the stormwater pollution prevention plan.
That'd be fine.
Interesting calculations.
Can we get a copy of that, of your presentation?
Sure.
No helicopter pad?
No heli, yeah, we tried, we tried. We put it in there so you could take it out.
We started with one, but it went away.
Absolutely, yeah.
Pretty quick. So, Michael, yes, so here's the subject of our variance that we're seeking relief and approval from your board. So the comment to these types of projects is to be able to show the lots early in the process to potential purchasers and get what they call, maybe I'm telling you what you already know.
Cash flow.
Well, not even cash flow, expressions of interest, that's it. It's a one-page, non-binding agreement, quote-unquote, it's not really an agreement, but it's something that projects of this type can take to a lender and say, people are interested.
Banks love it.
Yeah, banks love it, thank you. And that's the purpose of what we're seeking. This will be approximately a 1,000-foot, square-foot trailer. It's got a little bit of area in the road that's going to be encapsulated, so it comes out to about 1,364 feet, thereabout. But when you turn the page, when you turn the page, you're going to see the area we're planning. So this is an area that was already heavily disturbed, mowed, maintained, when they built the townhouses at the CIA.
Actually, let me, so you guys can orient yourself, this is the overall site, this is the northern tip of the CIA. Our trailer is right here. The idea is that the trailer's going to be right at the southern end of our site, where there's already a bridge going over the Maricchic Hill.
Are you on the CIA side, are you on the south side or the north side?
South side.
South side.
So the CIA has said that we can use this area, it will be a temporary trailer.
This is CIA property?
It's the CIA, well, it's all the CIA property.
No, I know, but I mean, in terms of right now.
It's, right now, it's part of the parcel that we are ground leasing.
It's northwest of their parking.
Right. And we have an existing lease, ground lease, with them now for the portion of the property, not the full portion yet, that lease is being amended to include more. So this will be added to it. It will be temporary, it will be on wheels, so it will be raised, so water and infiltration and anything can flow, there'll be no impervious surface under it, and there it is. Canna leave is a little bit off of that, of the grade. It will have its own sewer and water all built in, you know, we won't be hooking into any, we won't be putting any pilings in. So it will be, upon the building construction of the first leasehold villa, this will be taken down, and that villa will become the sales office, it'll be the sample, it'll be the sample.
Realistically, what kind of timeframe is that?
One year.
One year?
If you can make it through the process quick enough, it would be one year.
We're moving quickly, never quickly enough, but probably for some, too quickly. So, but we're, one year, we think, is a reasonable thing to get the first villa.
And maybe we should say that one year would start, we would like to get in there end of February, beginning of March for this trailer.
There would be ATV parked on the other side, preferably electric, that's what we're seeking. And then we would, and we're not going to build a structure there, probably just put something over it. People would come through the trailer, we want to make it comfortable, we want to let them see the maps, we want to present, you know, an initial brand of intimacy and comfort. And then we'll just take them on an existing trail that circles around the site. We have an app where literally you can see the site plan, where you are on the site plan as you're traveling. Stop where necessary, people can get out and walk, and they'll see the site. That's pretty much, I think we, I think we believe we, you know, we meet the criteria for the variance, we laid it out in the letter. CIA does not really have the facility for this type of thing, they'd much rather see us do this. And like I said, it's a very small area within the stream corridor, it's really not going to have a major impact on habitat connectivity or anything of that kind.
It actually worked out nice, because you can kind of see in this drawing, this is a, this was already leveled out.
That's what it looks like.
This is what's there today, it's a grass field, and it's fairly level. So we found that, we said that's an ideal place for this.
I've seen the pedestrian bridge. Are you going to leave the ATV on the other side?
Yes. Yes, yes.
We had that conversation already, with the planning board. Otherwise, we may not be able to fit through this.
Okay. You're within, see, how close are you to the creek?
There's a 50-foot buffer we don't touch, this is the 100-foot line, so we're in between that. We're going to be, the building will probably be about 65, 70 feet from the stream.
You're asking for, I'm trying to see.
It's 100% quote-unquote variance, I mean, we'll be entirely, we'll be outside of the 50-foot DUC.
Right.
But we will be entirely within the 100-foot stream corridor.
Right, you're within 100-foot corridor.
Correct, correct, entirely.
I'm getting at, it's how close to?
Yeah.
Are you within 50 feet, 60 feet of the?
It's about 60 feet, 65 feet from the river.
And the river?
Is a, I mean, you're pretty far from it.
Yeah, you can see the topo lines here, it falls.
And we're not going to be doing any excavating for the trailer, any type of, you know, disturbance.
I think, yeah, I think one of the, we need to go over and look at it.
Okay, please.
Need to arrange that.
Please, tell us, let's, whatever.
Kathleen.
Okay, Kathleen, we're getting very good at site visits, so, yeah, yeah. And you can, it's very easy, you can.
Dunkin' deliver there?
Yeah. Dunkin', I couldn't see the sign.
14-inch Dunkin' or 15-inch Dunkin', which way are we going? And just as a matter of, you can park, you'll be able to park right there, you'll be able to pull up, there's no other cars there, nobody uses it, and we'll have a little parallel park.
In worse places.
Excuse me?
We've had worse.
Yes, I'm sure you have. So that's.
This is exciting.
Good, glad you feel that way. We ought to.
Okay. Now, as the board knows, the planning board has declared themselves lead agency for the purposes of seeker review for the whole project.
Right.
I did go back to Michael and watch the planning board meeting after we swirled today, and they have not yet made a determination on segmenting this portion of the application or whether or not they'll treat it as a separate application. I did speak with the planning board attorney, she said that she would send a letter or some sort of notice to our board when they've made that determination on how it's going to be treated.
We're hoping that, we're hoping that they'll make that determination on the, at the meeting of the 15th, November 15th?
At the planning board.
Planning board, so that when we come before you the 16th, we can hold a public hearing if.
You're, I mean, if I understand, this is for a one-time variance on this?
Right.
To have some type of time limit perhaps? Okay, and separate from all of the other variances that you're going to come back with.
That's absolutely correct. And as far as, you know, just the sort of legalese, it doesn't commit this board anything with the other variances, doesn't commit to the project in the sense it's not going to make or, you know.
I understand.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
All right.
Excuse me, Sarah.
So I think we need to set a public hearing.
Sorry, I'm sorry, do we refer this to the county as well?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, the board should authorize the referral tonight, you know, it might be that the planning board has already covered the variances, if not, then the board will need to.
So we'll refer this to the Dutchess County Planning Department? I would look for a motion to do that.
Make a motion that we refer this to the Dutchess County Planning Department?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And that's the 56 feet from 100.
So then we will need to set a public hearing, public meeting for next gen.
Yes, if the board feels comfortable, the board can set the public hearing for the 16th?
Yeah, I think, yeah. So I would move that we set the public hearing for this variance for November 16th? There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
Those are renderings, if you got us a packet.
Are you good sending this PDF?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
It looked red, I want to be able to.
Chris, they did, they did highlight you, but.
I felt really highlighted.
Now, we also, we will be talking to our CSC, our climate-sensitive committee for the town, who also gives us some insights too, so we'll be probably taking some of this, we will be taking a lot of this information from them as well.
Great, appreciate it. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And Dunkin' is open till 8:00. Dunkin's got a little bad press tonight, bad press. Not bad, Dunkin' is good.
Would you like to adjourn the meeting?
You have to adjourn the meeting. Yeah.
We have to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, you want to?
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting?
Thank you.
All in favor? Wait a minute, I didn't ask for a vote yet. All in favor?